Okay, it is 6:16. We have the form of the board president, so I will call this meeting to order. If you'll stand on the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, hence the great republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, and with liberty and justice for all. Michelle, roll call, please.
Here.
Here. Here. Do we have any public comments here? Moving on to item two, board action, letter A, RFQ requests for clarification reviewed. I will be looking for a motion.
I hope the board approve to interview the four firms that submitted RFQs.
Motion to debate by Bobby to interview the four firms that have submitted the RFQs. We would like all of our discussion on the motion affirming all four, interviewing all four firms. Questions or discussion on interviewing the four firms. I suppose the question I would have is, do we have the date set when we could not be looking at? I don't like having my cell phone at the table while I'm reading. And secondly, are all four firms available to be in person for clarification? I think that would be great if they're in person, but I personally don't want to. But I would like to hear from all four. We have a time, it's 8:40. The other question would be, I know President's work together with the President, I'm Monday 15th, the best. And I don't want to be in the forefront of this. I think that's the time work for everyone else, 15th, next Monday before the night. And I can't speak for Bill or Catherine, I spoke to both of them, but they're not going to be here tonight. I just know that both ladies were in favor of interviewing all four.
If that's what you guys would want to do, I would have to come, which I guess we don't.
The grants, we think that's. If they know, they'll look at the board's actions in 25 minutes. The other thing that I would consider, that I believe should consider, is questions, questions that we may get from the board, that we can have those questions with character, because some of our questions may be connected over laughing. If it's possible, if we don't have a question tonight ready, we can send those to women, Jake, through her email. And then they can compile all those questions into one sheet. And then we have all of those questions in front, it's kind of like whatever we, and the people on the board, so we can also turn that into these questions. I don't think I have any other ideas on how to ask this, but obviously, we don't want to sit here and just do a presentation without giving the meaning of the thought to keep that in question. And I know probably between Jake and Clinton, who are really involved in this, the big candidate is, Bobby, I'm not sure how the question involved with. I'm sorry. No, I'm not sure how it involved you or the past, other stuff that you've interviewed. Yeah. Well, this is kind of, this is a, this is a relatively new process for all of us. Um. We heard all these stuff in the past. Which one comes off? Because I feel in that. You have questions, we can give them now.
I got the thing that stood out for me. Um, the, the thing that stood out to me, it's the ones that you have, that they have done with the private hospital firm. And I feel it was difficult, so that was just my, my thoughts, what I've been doing here. Just kind of go off of the, the point. Uh, do you remember which one it was? Um, one of them said that. But the question was, did she pass? I know that was. I'm not sure how it was. Yeah, I wasn't sure.
I think there's too much. I think my biggest concern is step one. Well, I guess step one is surveying the community, step two is to have referent pass. And the one that we came closest to pass, I'm not sure which architect we were working with, but there was a guy here. He lived here for a month. You know, he set up all these phone banks and just did a lot of work trying to get to that. Yeah, or what, how they're going to handle that, how they're going to handle it. In fact, I think what worked well in the past has no bearing on what would work well now.
No, I'm saying like.
Well, we're getting up to a lot of the pageant, but in the past, you know, we did a lot of newspaper articles. Well, Jake, whenever he put the proposal, the request out, that was the part that came out.
No, I'm, I'm hyper, I just, yeah, I'm just not asking. We may be able to get some.
For the first group. Could be solved, it's waiting for.
So, so, so what about the idea of doing some kind of a, instead of being a board meeting, it could be some kind of a workshop where there is the ability for free flowing communication after all of the interviews and then the selection that be made to be maybe referred for board meeting? And then the decision that be made and then referred to the board, where the facilities task force can be involved and ask questions? Sure, okay. Um, we could, if it's posted, or even in an official, I just don't, I'm not sure that we can, if it qualifies for boards. I don't know that public comment could, okay, public comment, if that, I'm not sure.
Well, it's hard, it's hard for very, like you said, that it's very qualitative.
So, if. Can we, if it is a board meeting and we have the task force present, they could hear everything, then after all the presentations, will there be a time where they could talk? Or they're like, well, Bobby said that public comment later, but still, if it's public comment, you all can't talk back. That's the worst one. I can find out, I can find out between now and tomorrow night, how we can do it, and I'll send communication. Whichever way will allow the ability to communicate. I just don't feel like just public comment does, but only having public comment still doesn't enable you to ask questions. But if we didn't like the task force itself, where they listened to the presentations, then afterwards, we were able to listen to their questions and respond or think about it.
For Jake, whatever these four firms are here, does the first firm that makes their presentation, they say all four firms, is a question because. No, I think you're saying bring all four of them. They're bringing the proposal, right?
This was awesome. I don't necessarily think that they would be able to ask questions, but it's more important to be able to provide their confidence. They're like, based on presentation, I heard these, like you said, it's kind of like, um, if I always ask questions, I'm like, I'm like, there.
What if, if they had us the same question? I mean, like. No, just like, figure with the question. Ask, interrupt them and ask, is that a way to fill the end?
However, I don't, to get the mail, but I don't want us to, all of a sudden, we need for questioning, first one is, that has been asked, we have two firms. But we really should have all the questions given back, so all four firms.
And then if you think about, sorry, if you write them, and then you get sent. Yep. And then that way all of them get it.
I like.
Pretty much the same question, man. And so we go, yeah, so we find one, one, one. Put them all down in an email, send them to one email, and then they all respond, and then we have to, and everybody, right, because that's what it's. Yes.
If it's so clear to us.
You can tell the procession inside.
Say before we get to the end. I would add the most that you wish, please. Great question. Sorry, we want to ask that. People think a lot of practice.
So that my question, please, but. I should go down and.
Thank you very much. No. Scare stuff of horses. Maybe we might as well special measure of iris system to give it all out.
I don't, um, I just want to mention, two populations, or, or. I don't want to assume. One thing that I like that, um, some of them mentioned was that people are just not as fun.
An evil stand up, you would prefer than the other, easily just like.
Um, they're like, um.
That's a thought, too. I know that previous board have gone to film, you know, shot with every. Most of them have their constructions.
Yeah, they just have to consider.
So I think we could get a, if we get a law group of most of these four firms.
Yeah, that's.
We can take, we can take our school, we can. Any other questions on discussion board? Where do you see, but I know there was. In age, maybe you're bored, not. He's going right straight to. Um.
Right, but what I'm, what I'm getting at is that, like, you know, there is.
Well, but they had like thirty thousand first level, but, but these companies are doing well. See what this would be, and hold what this would be, where we didn't have that brand or, uh, do, uh, through the.
Do we need, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, the task force brought to board recognition that it would.
We're not looking at all these, we're just looking at the students.
For the long range of facilities planning, so if they're gonna tell us, so is.
I, I, I hope that works.
Right, I was, yeah, we're sounding like. What is our.
This is what it is. All right, we're going to do, you know, after, picture that, do it in a, in a small board. Yeah, that's what this is going to do, right? They're not looking at three or four, they're looking to see what facility space we got in the high school, what facility space we got in middle school, and definitely we need to work in that school, that we have more pre-classes, door building, that we have.
But it will, it will also tell us, Bobby, too, like, if they will look at all of everything in the middle school and say, you've got fifteen more years left on your board, so you better be getting prepared for to replace it. This is what you gotta look at that's not working well at the high school level, so that we have that long range plan and that we're budgeting to be able to not be reactive to those things, but to have a plan to replace it before maybe something goes out, possibly or maybe someone else.
So they don't actually design anything, no, a referendum is bad.
Yeah.
Well, it, it also means we're supposed to be able to open front door system, but we have to have.
They ask about that.
Katie, do you want to keep it when they do it?
No, I didn't.
So when they, when they start that, it's, it was, um, like, that now, I mean, so, I don't know where the, the two offices, the country, I mean, one of that time, first of course, it's, um, so. How simple things that, like, how we know that this year for me. The book that kind of stuff is not, is. So one thing I would like to say now, now when we go with that, they have. Because we're gonna see. Like over having here, so you're gonna go along. Right, they depend the hell that I'm that. They said on the. He recorded it himself, but he knows that it costs money. He says it's okay to put this really good value to see. Well, they all know how you.
One is, I'm Scott, a board member from a different district up here. In this eighteen mile thing, they want that what they want in the architect. It's priced at twenty-six million. Uh, the school perception is in and see uh he would support this. So they reduce it to eight to five. Um, are we getting, where where would we get that? You know, one major, you know, commitment, you know, like school perception gives you in the task force. But that's it. And do they have, do they do that? First, do you think I? Yes, I check this in for the same session. I'm listening. Do the survey, do the stuff, know what the survey, know what we want to do, but you also have very high uh way of. Not. And what, and what district did they do that in, in the. Athens that they did that? Or was it Green Bay? Cause there were, there were a couple of schools that I think were free paid, but they only got ten percent back. They, they looked at the results and they got some more back. Will not change. Yeah.
Well, they all kind of.
Thank you all for coming into the office and do it here, they do the email. QR codes, that's all.
Okay, I think we're giving a little block away from the certain question here. Okay, so these type of. That's just, these have to separate. These are two. These are the articles. And they're gonna be the person also who gives us this criteria, that I know the task force talk to them, like this would be an optimal.
Yeah, most they, most often they don't, they look to us, so whoever we go with typically, my experience has been, they will come in and they will work with our admin team and they will work with our building principals and look at things and ask us for our recommendations and then all of that gets shared out.
I just didn't want to be in the situation where we screw up our BPI, that's why we didn't.
Yeah, no, we will be doing that.
So first we see the physical options and then we pick the.
Yes. Yep. And it could be a large variety of options that gets narrowed, then narrowed, then narrowed. Yeah.
Right, be the, be the simplest one. So the motion on the floor is that the board approved the request to interview the following four firms, A T S R, who designed the report.
It's only funny, it's only funny cause your verbal take is just that sentence beforehand. You can of course just say it without, just like, I, I, I try not to smile, somebody did. It's, it's very entertaining.
So we have a meeting with the Donovan group, um, I believe it's this week and we're gonna start talking about referendum work. So they will be helping with some of that as well.
You remember, it's a weird thing that Donovan group, we hired them for our fix rate and you wouldn't really ask them, right? So let it.
Well, right, if architects are concerned with the. Task of the. And all of the. Other suffering.
We probably should hire like fifty people first, we need some help.
I, I would, I would say that Donovan group shouldn't be discussed tonight, it's been on the long meeting agenda. I understand. But we have the Donovan group under contract to, whatever that date is. So when that time comes to renew, then we can have a discussion. You have questions? Yes, I have a second question. And that is, when we do enrollment projections, um, you know, we have half of the elementary schools. What do we do in the book of the other half of the elementary schools where they're likely to go? Um, you know. Yeah, but that everybody goes to our school. So they can project on the. Voucher school, where the voucher school starts getting money for every. Because this, this hasn't been an issue in vast referendums we've run, we've never really. I'll see it's possible to do, you know, these programs almost out of resistance. And that is not the case anymore and, you know, they're talking about. Instead of having a district, a voucher school, voucher schools who take their money directly from the state. And the big one is if you take off. And if the other one has said in. Here to um gap. Well, I'm not sure who it's a question for, I guess that's what I'm asking, who is it a question for?
Well, and, and I think that it will come from the projections as well because there's data, there's trend data that we get from. Or that's hot, that we'll talk about that, but I do think it is a unique situation because of the number of students that have left the district, that planning that will have to be taken into consideration because the hope will be that we will bring those students back once we are, um, we're training with.
This is probably.
Maybe, but they would, yeah.
If ten percent of those students come back, this would be a support room. You know, making those. Well, even if our top will be. So the motion on the floor is to approve the interviews of these four companies. We do not have the voting device, so we can do it all, but we get it at the same time. Uh, all in favor of these, uh, the request for interviews with all four firms, let it be known by. So you got, all right, and that motion carries, we'll have the review next Monday. Motion to adjourn. Motion's been made to adjourn, all in favor of adjournment, by saying aye. All the same time, and it's carried.